And did we have any public comments signed up? Before it gets to you, is there any adjustment to our agenda? So we'll go with, the adjustment to the agenda was that I added adjustments. Alright, and next is reviewing the minutes of previous meetings. So we just read September was sixth.
I think it was the fifth.
Fifth, okay. And we all, I think we needed a motion actually to approve those. Second, any discussion on those? All in favor? And I didn't know if there were any other minutes?
Yes, there's one more set of minutes that I have typed, but they're not in meeting minute form yet. So I got that part down. We just gotta put them into a meeting minute form and so.
And there was some that I think were emailed to us.
You signed those last night. That's from me, because I emailed you some, a lot, like three of them.
Right.
Yeah, I think we signed them at the last.
Did we?
Yeah. So then I think there's only one set out now.
Okay.
And that's, because that's mine. And I'm not very good at meeting minutes.
That's right.
A little time consuming, so it takes me a while to get back to them.
It's hard to do it.
Yeah, okay.
We will get that done next.
There's a lot of going back and rewatching the video and seeing. So, yeah.
Very good for me. Okay, very good. Alright, public comments, Steve.
My name is Steve Bro. I already, you know, talked to some of you guys about this topic, but I wanted to cover it again. The solar farms that we've been talking about, solar ordinance. As you guys all know, we have an existing land use ordinance in Monson. It was adopted back in June 18th of 2001, so that's 23 years ago. In it, it describes five different districts or zones. One of them is called the rural district. That document also refers to it as a rural residential, but sometimes just a residential zone. It kind of varies all over this. But this is a quote right out of the words. I want to read it to you. "The purpose of the rural residential zone is to allow for the conservation of natural resources, open space land, and to encourage agriculture, forestry, resource extraction, and recreational activities." Then it goes on, if you keep reading it, lists the things that it does allow and does not allow. So it allows recreational activities and specifies by some of them, hunting, fishing, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, public parks, trails, snowmobiling, and motorsports. In the rural zone, you're only allowed to build a single-family home. We can't even build a multi-family home. We can't build like a duplex zone. Then it says, "We absolutely cannot build any kind of industrial activities." And it lists a few examples, lumberyard, manufacturing plant, a junkyard, sewage plant, wholesale facility, and a concrete plant. So none of those are allowed in the rural residential zone. And then this, it goes on to commercial activities, and it kind of varies, but in the majority of it, it says, "Most commercial are not allowed, including auto repairs, banks, beauty shops, greenhouses, and floors." I mean, greenhouses and floors, they think, hey, maybe those should be allowed, but they're not, according to the ordinance. Then there's art galleries, bed and breakfasts, motels, and retail establishments. They're all not allowed. So if I look at this list and I compare it to a solar farm, a solar farm is most closely on this list, a manufacturing plant. If you think about it, a solar farm manufactures electricity. And it doesn't meet any of the goals of the zone. It doesn't conserve natural resources. As a matter of fact, it destroys it. It drives animals out of the zone. It doesn't provide open spaces. The space is useless. It doesn't encourage agriculture or forestry. It doesn't provide any recreational activities. And it doesn't provide, like I said, any of the benefits or the purpose of the zone. So if you go back in time, we kind of don't need, we kind of didn't need a solar ordinance. Look at the existing land use ordinance and you should say, hey, you know what? A solar farm doesn't really belong in a residential zone. So if anybody who, you know, takes the time, you know, 15 minutes and reads that ordinance, they'd probably come to the same conclusion. So my position is, we shouldn't be allowing solar farms residential, and we shouldn't be grandfathering them either just because somebody started them. Because like I said, they should go by the existing ordinance. And to me, the ordinance says, not here, but in the industrial zone where it belongs. Well, my other topic was ATVs. I don't know, I know it's on your agenda, I don't even know what to talk about, but I just wanted to reiterate, which I know you guys probably know. ATV brings a ton of money into Monson. The bed and breakfasts, places people stay, the general store, all the restaurants, the gas station, everybody makes a ton of money. It's one of the top three reasons I came to Monson, is why I moved to Monson. So I don't know if it's relevant to your conversation coming up, but.
Thank you. And interesting, I know you messaged what you just said to us previously earlier in the week. And so I took another, you know, really more in-depth reading of the land ordinance. And I was looking at the scale that's on page 22, a table rather. And it lists like what activities are allowed, what are allowed with permit from a code enforcement officer from the planning board. Interestingly, small-scale wind and large-scale wind energy facility systems are both allowed with either code enforcement permit or permit from the planning board. That was interesting.
I didn't actually notice that.
Yeah, yeah. I went through those tables. So anyways, here or there, neither here nor there. But I thought, you know, I learned some things that we're looking at, that we're reading it.
Brian, has some? Brian?
I helped write that. And solar was not.
Wasn't on the radar.
At that time.
Right.
And that is a land use ordinance, which can be changed, but it takes a lot. But if it's not specifically pointed out in your land use ordinance or your showland zoning ordinance, in this case, solar farm, doesn't specifically say it in there in scheduled uses. Well, that doesn't, you don't have any restrictions on it.
I tend to disagree. If somebody came forward and said, "I want to build a nuclear power plant," would you allow it?
That's a residential zone.
That's addressed in there.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's more like a manufacturing plant. Solar wasn't on the radar 23 years ago.
That's right.
So if you look at solar and solar comes along and say, well, what is solar? Is it something that fosters recreation?
Well, the only way you're gonna do it is to change your land use ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Boo. Alright, next on our agenda, town manager report. Alright, thank you so much.
Alright, so I have actually a couple things on my report that's not on the agenda this week. Usually everything on my report is on there. So, um, you guys got budget reports?
Unfortunately, just today, you got them. But did you guys have any questions on any of the budget reports? I was just gonna ask, is there anything that stands out to you?
The only thing that stands out a little bit is I'm still getting paid out of the part-time line, not the town manager line, so it looks like.
I was wondering that.
There's no, there's no town manager.
Right.
But it's just being paid out of the wrong line. We already fixed that today, so going forward.
Okay.
It will be correct.
I noticed that, but I kind of assumed that's what was going on.
Yeah, yeah.
I had one question. Do you know how, I mean, we probably haven't looked at it, but pay for the voluntary fire department is that down compared to last?
Quite a bit, I would think, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like anecdotally, it doesn't seem that there have been as many calls.
Well, I think that they, historically speaking, they probably had the same amount of calls. There's just not as many
Okay.
tradings or truck cleanings or things. Anyways, but yes.
I thought it looked that way.
Yes.
I had one other question. I was just looking at lines. You know, we're 25% into the fiscal year. So anything over 25, I was just kind of scanning for some grant writing. We've actually spent money on grant writing. Is that correct? Where did we see that? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I read that wrong.
I was gonna say, I don't think so.
It must have been, oh, website, I see.
Yes.
Website, is what threw it out. Okay. And then legal was?
Legal is probably being paid out of the wrong line.
Okay, that was my other question. Alright.
And I think some of that legal actually is last year's legal being paid for this year.
Okay.
Because we didn't get it in time. But I'll, I'll look at that. But yeah, it's just getting paid out of the wrong line.
Okay.
Because it should be on.
Contractual.
Contractual.
Okay, great.
Okay, yeah. So there wasn't anything else that really stuck out to me either. So that's. And then the fire warden, I don't really have any more information. We called and left another voicemail today. Hopefully, somebody will get back to me and say, yeah, it's all set.
You still talking with Sam or somebody above him?
Somebody above him now, so, yeah.
Called up the fire wardens.
Like the fire marshal's office?
Fire marshal's office.
And then, what was the guy's name?
Ron Geesley. That was who they transcribed me to, but.
So, that's, but then the transfer station DEP letter update. We do have an update for that. So I talked to Nick Mayhew, who wrote the, "You need to know, I understand that you're not supposed to, can't," but and he basically said that they know that we can't do anything, but they are still required to send us that letter, even though that they know that we can't do it, because the state regulates that and makes them send that letter to us. He said that nothing's gonna happen, but required by law there to send that letter. And we may see another letter in the next 10 years or whatever that says something similar to that, because they're required to send it. He said, but he did give me his boss's number too, because when he went to do the site inspection, he was like, how? And I guess Brownville got the same letter, because similar situation for, hold on. Except for theirs, you can't even drive to it anymore. So it's, and so he was telling me all about it. And he was like, using swear words and all this stuff. He's like, and I can't believe this. And he's like, and I didn't even brought my boss down there, because I was like, what do I do? Like, what do I say? And he's like, so I was hoping, I was waiting for your call. Poor guy, I know. So he gave me his boss's number. I wanted to touch base with him too. And just basically go from there. I mean, he said, nothing's gonna happen. Like, nobody's gonna come and find us. Nobody's gonna, it's just their doing, their, their job, even though.
Can he send us a letter verifying that?
And that's what I asked. It'd be nice to have it written.
Right.
Because someday they could say we.
And he told me that if I wanted to make a stink about it, that I could. And then as, he's like, you know, this isn't a Nick thing, or there was a Matt Young that was also a part of this. He goes, this isn't a Nick thing. It's not a Matt Young thing. This is a department thing. So if you want to make a stink about it, you can. And then the department as a whole will have to do something about it.
Then they'll call us over.
I was gonna say, I just leave it alone then.
The boss is great, the problem for us, we're gonna drop all this to them.
You've had this conversation.
Oh, absolutely. Now it's in the meeting minutes, so.
Yeah.
If he could even email and say, like, if we had it in writing, but we don't, we don't want to force it to the point where they start.
Just to follow up on our phone conversation. This is what you said, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, actually.
Because then you have a record of them actually acknowledging that how silly it is. And they can't come back in 20 years and say, we've been sending you letters for
Right.
30 years and you've done nothing. And I mean.
Let's just look back in the emails from 20.
I mean, Brian said he'd go there. Do you want to go down on the bottom of the old pit?
Oh, they tried to get me to watch the fall.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario.
Stagger in the workplace.
Yeah.
Cut a few trees down in one patch and have them take a picture of that patch.
Yeah.
The next time they come up, be like, well, they're making progress, so couldn't we just throw a man?
No, bad idea.
Okay, so that's that update. Road committee update, I guess this would kind of fall under roadwork and loader options.
Yeah.
All that, so then we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Billing of insurance for car accidents and stuff for the fire department. So I touched base with the, Centromane Cost Recovery is the company that we use that took me forever to find, because I could not, in the life of me, figure out who we had a contract with. But I guess they actually sent a renewal contract to Bill in January of last year, and then followed up in July of last year. And there was no contact made. So he's actually sending me over a new contract. And the only thing that has changed from their old contract to their new is their share went from 20% to 25%. So whatever costs they do recover, they keep 25%, and we get 75%. So I should see that new contract. Either, I should have had it today, but maybe tomorrow. He said in the next couple days, so. So there's that. But then CEO licensing update. As far as I know, Ken has passed all of his exams that he was required to take. So yay, there. He, in the last one that I had to talk to, was an open book exam. So I'm not, the only thing that I really had to watch, I guess, was his time, which he was completed way before the time of it. I think he had like three hours or something like that. So there's, congratulations, Ken. You did a great job.
Good job.
Town internet update. The gym and the transfer station both have Wi-Fi now.
Thank you.
Yes.
And they work?
And they work. So yay.
Yeah. What's happening? Is it true now?
Premium choice.
Oh, and I just got an email from them this morning that they're at no charge increasing our speed.
Yep, we got that same email as well.
Really?
They actually just installed the transfer stations today.
I guess because it's been so slow lately.
So does, will that make the security cameras down there accessible through the internet?
I don't know what the story is with those. They've been there for a long time. I don't know if they don't work. I've never heard that it was because there was no Wi-Fi. But I don't really know.
I don't actually know anything about the cameras.
Wasn't there something? Was it just the solar that's down there?
That's why.
Yeah. I'm just gonna put those cameras on the desk. Because it's something that we can hook into now that we have Wi-Fi in.
We can get around or get the cameras up here.
That's awesome.
Somebody can watch Jim do his job.
I think that would be an awfully boring tape to watch.
It would be not.
I don't know, that's a good conversation down there.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay, so that's that internet. Someone's errors. I don't want to say too much, but where I have papers in my head. But as from what I have been told, there is a builder and a carrier for a tower here in town. So, no, we took that yet. It's not official, but that has been what I've been told. So yay, us, if that's what you. Vortex towers, okay. The EMS training. Brian Elshon will be taking a basic EMT training starting September 18th. And I have submitted for a, to become a compact member with the Alfond Foundation. And we were accepted. And so then I applied for funding for up to 50% of the EMT course. So hopefully, within the next seven days, I should know if we got accepted for that half of the training, so.
So you paid the other half? How much is?
$2,400. So.
And now they're training.
Line, yes. Yep, so that will be a good thing for the department. He goes on every single call. He's most available. He's, and he's been in here trying to get this whole EMT class and the grant and everything together. So he's been very diligent and very patient with me while we worked through some of the kinks. But no, I think this will be, will be good for the department. And then I also gave him a letter saying, like, if he doesn't complete the course, then he has to pay the town back for the the cost of the class. And then the FEMA update is still rolling along. So $7,500, well, actually $7,521.29 has been approved for emergency protective services. This is including the fire department's personnel and some helps for that particular day, December 18th, for that particular day. So we had estimated like, like $4,200 is something for our cost, but using like the FEMA cost calculators and all their codes and all that. It came out to $7,500 for that, and that was actually approved. And so I did my last signature on that. So the roads are separate. So we had the site inspection, and I'm waiting for the site inspection report and mitigation report, because there may be some mitigation money that we received to help with Digging the Elliottsville Road. So it depends on, right, in the mitigation report, depends on what they put in the second inspection report. Depends on how much funding we get for mitigation, basically. And then my last update, that's not on the agenda, is a representative, well, one of Susan Callis' representatives, is actually coming here on September 19th to meet with me and the fire department to basically just see if we would even be eligible for any of the grant money and stuff. So we have somebody coming. I don't know who it is, and they're talking with the fire department. And it's basically just a very initial, see if we would even be eligible, see if we would fall under any of the criteria, and see what conditions they're looking at. So.
What day is it, September?
September 19th, so next Thursday. Fingers crossed, yes.
Excellent. Wow, thank you.
So that is my little spiel. I tried to make it as quick, but also have something for you.
Except. Alright, next is select board reports. Jonathan, first? Nothing here? I don't know. Did we have security camera update on you?
Yes, well, technically, no. It's under MMA risk management.
Okay, I'll wait for that.
Alright.
So I was just like erasing everything, because you covered it in your report there. The only thing left, and then I just wanted to ask about, was, we talked about last time, having some kind of bulletin board, maybe up at the EV charger to advertise local businesses. So if people from away are charging, they know they can come down and, and what things they could do in town. And I didn't know if that's something, I know it's kind of minor compared to all the other things we're trying to get done right now.
But I feel like that might be a good J project to, because she's great for things like that.
Price out what that might cost.
Right, and like designed kind of something like that.
Yeah, weather protected, yeah. Okay, that'd be great.
So it feels that, go ahead.
Business association. Maybe you could get real done on that.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. That's a good idea. Sorry.
Now, would that be something that we'd be able to have up there year-round?
If we put it behind the EV charger. Or like behind the Jersey barriers or whatever blocking.
And otherwise, it's gonna be taken out by.
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of research in it.
Just not a real good spot to be put, stop right there.
Yeah.
I did have one thing.
Okay.
So it sort of relates to what Steve talked about a few minutes ago. And it's come up, it came up when I was a member of the planning board. And it's been brought up a couple of times that I'd had the idea of, when I was a member of the planning board, of sitting down with the select board and the town manager and having a kind of a working meeting to discuss where we're headed. And thinking about some of the things that are restricted in rural residential. Potentially, at least having a conversation about. On the thought of, for example, not allowing greenhouse, but allowing agriculture.
Right.
Not allowing an automotive repair shop. Because it's possible there is one. And so just taking an opportunity at some point when things slow down, right? You know, but taking an opportunity to have a meeting where we get together and have a conversation about some of the things that we're both, both groups are seeing, especially as, I mean, it seems like we're gonna miss the deadline on the comprehensive plan. So as we're thinking about addressing that comprehensive plan, it might give us a direction to kind of, to get that discussion restarted.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's just something to put on our.
Still like a work session.
Yeah, I think it would have to be a lesser meeting than our work session, where, you know, it would be nice if we were, I know we're independent bodies, but if we're pulling in the same direction, it's sure.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
James had mentioned that, wanted to do that at some point. What is the deadline? I'm sorry, I can jump on that, about the comp plan.
October.
October.
October what?
I have to look at that.
It really fell off the radar.
It really did, but then it came back on the radar. And Sandra's been doing a little help. I sent that to her and Dana, because we talked about having a committee for that. And when I emailed everybody whose name was mentioned, the only ones that I heard back from was Sandra and Dana.
So we're working on it. There's a bunch of holes to fill there.
Yep, yep. So, so they were going to come to us and see, you know, if they had certain questions, possibly reach out to others who may have answers to the questions. There was, there was quite a list of things that, that needed to be filled in and.
Kind of daunting.
So has the planning board given any thought to hiring somebody like Dean Bennett that originally wrote that, to maybe come in and just make your life a lot easier?
But there is a meeting coming up, so perhaps I will mention that. Some of the stuff is fairly.
Straightforward.
You can do it. Some of the stuff, phone calls are gonna have to be made, or somebody's gonna have to be consulted, so. We're still assessing.
Yeah.
We're not trying to take work away from you, but if you want.
It would be okay if you did, but yeah.
What happens if we aren't able to meet the deadline?
That I don't know. I'll have to get back in touch with the person that I was corresponding with over there, just to find that out. I don't know if it.
You have to restart the process.
Possibly, and if.
I can't remember.
If we do, it would just be a matter of like what resubmitting.
Well, pretty much, yeah, like filling in, because we already know now what we need. And then I guess we would probably, I would guess, resubmit it again, and then have everybody have the opportunity to review the comment, just like we did last time.
But we would actually have the required documents this time around.
And maybe you have someone that would potentially follow through.
You think so? You think so?
We based on experience. So. It it could be a much smoother process, but if you can meet that deadline in October, it would be ideal because then you don't have to. Right through that whole process again.
Right.
Knowing the deadline would be us.
Yeah.
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 Did I put it in my email to you? I think I did. If you if you can access your email, I I think I did it.
Let me look. If you did, I missed it, but that's not.
Oh, while she's looking at that, one thing popped in my head. Um I didn't know if you were gonna cover the town flag contest.
Yeah, so we. I didn't even think to put that away.
That's okay, people, did you get some votes?
Uh yeah, we have actually got a lot of votes, so we figured just leave it up for a couple of weeks, let that is when the people vote. And then go from there. Uh it was brought up that the design on. What I think is going to be the winner, actually.
Oh, October eleventh.
I was gonna say, for some reason, I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have another month.
Not quite, yeah, not quite. Okay, well, we'll see what we can do.
Well, how does it submit? Half of the stuff.
You said you maybe it was.
There was, there were, there was a list.
Possibly, um yeah, I'll have to reach out to him.
Okay, so I'm gonna put that extension.
Okay, yikes.
Or.
I'm gonna put it on my list, so you'll put it on yours and we'll talk about it.
And I'll move it up on my to do list. It's there, it's.
Hopefully be high field. It's all there.
We're hoping that it it seems more daunting than it is. That's what we're hoping.
It's, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be.
Well, I think there was a lot that was, there were kind of categories of stuff we had to do, stuff we. Should think about doing, stuff that could be changed, but doesn't need to be or something.
There was a bunch of old data that was submitted that used to be updated, so that's.
Yeah, that's what happens when there's.
But it takes eight, two years to have something when there's a pandemic, you're gonna say, yeah. Okay, so that, um, yes, so we have. We had six submissions and um. We had the in the front office, so people could vote in person or on Facebook. Um and it was talked about and brought to my attention that the. The flag that they win has uh the logo that's on our website, so we should probably talk to the collaborative to see.
It's oh, it's the town owns it.
Okay.
So it's.
That came up last night.
Okay, so, cool.
All right, so.
Uh that's the one that everybody seeks to really like and it it's very, it's very creepy.
Okay.
But, yes.
Thank you. Well, the reason I ask this because segue into the next uh agenda item, uh committee reports, beautification. Um I, we have talked about, and I'll I'll let you kind of add on here. Um, an idea of banners on some of the the light poles in town and um. Uh I just had a thought that we could use, you know, even not just the winner, but. All the other ones that were submitted, if we if we could afford it and it's possible to make those as banners to put on. Those light poles.
It's only the one that really screams monster.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but.
But we can talk more about, anyway, beautification committee.
Is having trouble meeting, but we're gonna have to by hook or by crook because there's some things we gotta do, so. So nothing new.
Yeah, we just need to break it our way, people to. So, yeah, and and help. Um, and recreation.
There's stuff planned.
There is.
That I am hoping to get detail on, so if you go on the collaborative newsletter, which will come out. In a few days. And we're going to do a mailing. It's gonna, should I just segue into this?
Yeah.
The complaints about communications in town. We decided last night that we'll do a quarterly, every door direct mail. Mailing of the newsletter, so it won't just be emailed. And it will be paid for by small advertisements and local businesses, so.
Oh, sweet.
So in an effort to improve mitigation in town. If people can take ahead three months and let me know what. If they'd like to communicate.
Yeah.
We'll do that. And a place to you guys too.
Is this uh newsletter that's going out in a couple of days, is this one going to be direct? Uh so if I had like a list of upcoming important dates, I could get that to somebody?
Yeah.
Okay, because I that was actually. Brought by Radar to bring up is I actually have. A list of upcoming important dates that I think that I was gonna post. The myself around town.
And you should do.
Yeah, I.
This is just another way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
That would be great. Um, I was just thinking, you know, when we do our select board uh agendas and we have town committee reports. Um we haven't historically included the collaborative in this, but the collaborative, it just makes sense to have. It's the umbrella of all the other committees if we have. Someone to report on the collaborative, um and I know you're kind of being roped in on.
Yeah, I I happened to, unfortunately, no, just I happened to walk by last night. As they were meeting on the back porch, I was looking for my son and um I did agree that I will I will start to attend the meetings. Um I I figured that since Tom attends, it probably is.
I, yeah, I I didn't want to get involved in it, but I I'm I'm wondering if you could reach out next time you go and just ask if. Um just let them know that we'll, um it would be nice to have. A blurb or something for select word names for sure.
Well, I do the newsletter.
Okay, so I can get, so I could get these to you then?
Blurb to me.
Okay, so.
Preferably in the form you'd like it to take and not very wordy because there's not a lot of room. In other words, I don't want to do all the writing. I'll just put it together.
But I don't want to volunteer for you to be the representative for the collaborative to report.
Jonathan's on the collaborative.
Right.
I love it. Good job, Jonathan, thank you.
All right, and then um cemetery committee. I don't know if there's anything new in the cemetery committee. I don't think so, okay. And then we have a new committee, the roads, but we're gonna be talking about that uh lower down. All right, um. So then next is the uh coenforcement um report.
Kent, is the one on Island Road, is that the the yurt?
No, um. Road to go town culture.
Okay.
Dump trucks of fuel in there.
So the other one is not listed here that we got an email from. That's really new.
Yeah.
Okay. And then uh. He has a email from DEP. Because they came and did a couple of site visits around it that uh basically what the email is saying is that. They're gonna have a more detailed letter for each property, basically, and that she's gonna follow up on. These complaints and this would be. Well, that one I wrote. And then the other team that we already knew about them. And Mr. Brown.
So is DEP going to be the entity that um. Takes care of this or we've talked about this, are they throwing it back at us?
Don't think they'll know until I get their report.
Yeah, I I think it's more going to, from my sense of reading this, it's more of a group effort. Than anything, so uh this says like she stopped by and she'll be followed up with a detailed letter. I will try to get to that too as soon as possible, do some field visits, blah, blah, blah. Some of it likely needs to be removed or restored, but he might be able to apply for an accurate effect permit, so that's up to us, that's up to us, so. Uh and then. Uh so like the other one needs to be uh seeded and replanted to meet shoreline zoning standards. And then in a separate email, they're going to to keep things tidy. They're gonna follow up on the highway route.
Okay.
Did we, you referenced the yurt and I saw your emails about it. Did we get information about that? Other than, I like, I got an email from you guys, right?
That's, yeah, that's.
That's the first that I wanted to.
Yeah, that's the first that I had.
But I didn't get any information about what we were talking about.
I guess.
I mean, I assume I know, but I didn't get an email that.
Oh, the Jessica's email, you did it? Oh.
I don't believe so.
Did I send it just to you?
No, I got it.
You got it.
Oh, so you're just keeping me.
Well, let me check, um.
But we still should be maintaining our procedures for all these different violations in the event the DEP just says. I'm out of here.
Yeah. Yeah, so once, I feel like once we get the detailed letter and. The, I guess, more information as to what to do, the. Because she say that if he might be able to apply for an after the fact permit. Well, if that's the case, then there's.
It's.
Our place to give this out in the fact permit, it would be there.
There is, yeah.
So.
You know, I'm still getting used to this new emails.
Very, very rarely will the DEP give you an after the fact permit.
Right. And that that's for the the C wall. But uh it says that uh. The enforcement team will be looking into.
Did I know it's.
Kent, didn't you? Talk about that with Jessica or one of them and she said they do not. Give after the fact permits?
This, you can get an after the fact permit, but they charge you a lot more and fine you.
But he got it, that's really weird.
But the person before her said he likes after the fact permits, but in this case it's not possible, it has to be taken out and restored.
Okay, I I thought I was saying something like that.
One person did it, she say possibly, I literally sound ridiculous, I can't even hear a play of voice. Oh, yeah, so so one person did it, and it seems like everybody at DEP wants us to do the impossible and. Nobody talks to each other to figure out. Does that sound about right?
That's all right.
Okay, I just realized that I had not sent forward that, actually, it was in a draft form, but you got it?
Yeah, I don't.
Where's the email from Jessica? Like, I hadn't seen.
Yeah, oh, you wanna know why? Because I betcha I was included on the original email from Jessica.
Okay, but Aaron saw it, right?
Yeah, read the photos and everything. Yeah, well, I don't know.
That is really weird, okay. I I'm. Yeah, we have like new town emails and that we're getting used to the whole new system, so.
Sorry. Technology, it's, it's a wonderful thing when it works.
I know.
Okay. No, it was to that.
It did, okay. I don't know what I did.
Like, who was the one that made the little colored pencil drawing? That one?
Yeah, that was what she sent me.
That's what she.
Yeah, what Jessica sent me.
No, there was that and there was a couple of Google Earth.
Yeah.
Photos, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're dealing with even that the year, they're they're gonna send.
I, yeah, I, that's what I was wondering, so Jessica's gonna send us more information on the property with the yurt, is that correct?
I don't know that, actually. Uh Kent, do you have any information you'd like to share about the yurt?
The only information I got, I got from you.
Okay, were you able to touch base with her today?
I called her, I got a voicemail.
Okay. So, no, but we are trying to touch base with Jessica to see.
I do much better with her with email.
That, uh, now that I open that, all I have, all my, oh now is. The. The email that I originally saw.
Yeah, and I just sent something because I, it was in my draft folder and. And I don't see that the picture showed up. Oh, or they're not loading, but anyway, we. We'll cover it.
Yes. Yes, but I did, I was able to talk to Kent this morning to say, like, basically tell his what was going on. To ask him to reach out to Jessica, uh because I had about seven hundred and eight things on my to do list today, so if he could reach out to her today. That way, hopefully, I was hoping that she would get back to him today, but.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Keep you emailing her.
Yeah, keep you emailing her. And it's supposed to keep Kent a little bit as much as possible, that way we're all.
Yeah, yeah.
I just said she did not send you the email about the yurt.
What's that?
Jessica did not contact me about the yurt.
She did not.
Which makes no sense. I thought that, actually.
Because the email was addressed to you.
Yeah, the email was addressed to.
It says hi, Kent.
And then go through the email a little bit.
Somebody was having a day.
Yeah, because.
I'm not saying she did this, I'm just saying I didn't see.
You know what? It went to your Gmail, it went to my Gmail. It didn't go to our town emails. That's what happened. Okay, and then I had to forward it to my town email, so. All right, anything more on CEO report?
Um, no, and I think that we pretty much covered the issues as well.
Yeah. All right, onto old business, uh road work.
Road work, how exciting. All right. So I was able to receive two quotes for road work. Um I asked each. Person to give it to me in hours for each piece of equipment, so uh how much an hour for dump truck, how much hour for excavator? Uh so we could see, so we could do the most amount of work with what money we have. And uh to just break it down by hours, that way with the money run out, we have done what we we can do. Uh it was Steve working alongside the contractor, it will kind of keep that. Moment of going and make sure that, you know, we're getting the most for our money. Uh so the two were THA Logging Incorporated in the invest. Invest, no, I'm just gonna skip that one. Uh dump truck was eighty five dollars an hour. Escavator was a hundred and twenty five per hour. And then the second one was Chad Davis. And dump truck was ninety two dollars an hour, excavator was. A hundred and thirty dollars an hour, as well as making up eleven hundred feet of ditch work that was miscommunicated, miscommunicated a few years ago.
That's the word.
That's, that's what I'm using. It wasn't Marty's favorite.
I know, I think you meant Marty's mouth.
No, it did. No, it did not. Yeah. Uh, so. That's. Um, Arvo expressed interest that I messaged him this morning, hoping that he would also give me a quote, but. He must, he's very busy and he might have just figured I don't have time to do it. And we're kind of down to the crunch line here.
Who's, who's the first one?
So. So, uh. If we were to go with Chad, he would be, uh. Instead of forty-two hundred feet, it would be thirty-one hundred feet of ditching. Because the eleven hundred would be baited up, so we could do more road work for.
We make motion, uh, hire Chad, do the work.
Since, um, okay, all in favor?
All right, so I'll touch base with Chad Laura and get him a book, I'm in the process of ordering culverts right now, uh, it might be a matter of ordering some from. Dergo and Ware Butler, because everybody's running a little low on stock at, towards the end of the season, so it might be a little bit of piecework, but we'll get. We'll get it done.
There's an awful lot of culverts just sitting on the side of the roads everywhere.
Yeah, and Chad actually has one that we can purchase for him as well, that's a steel culvert. That's the size that we need, so that's one less that we have to.
How many of them are left?
Uh, we need six eighteen inch ones and then ten cross, so ten. Yeah. So we're looking to get this, of course, completed by, yeah, like, as, like, as soon as Chad could do it. So, uh, Steve actually took a couple of days off last week and this week in preparation for just being available for whatever. Chad is available and the, the sand and the salt is all put up now, so. He's, he's ready and available.
Do we have to have any road closure? I know.
Yeah, you're gonna have to stay, you have to stay at my house.
All the way around, right?
Yeah.
I've been talking to Chad a little, that he's picked up a lot of hurting last couple of weeks.
Okay.
Just, it's that time of year, everybody's realizing that winter's coming, we haven't gotten everything we need to do.
Yeah.
I, I wish it wasn't so, I wish you could have done, you know, available tomorrow, but.
Yeah.
Eh eh, but, I mean, do talk to him, but uh just be aware that he's.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I, I don't expect him to, to be here tomorrow, um, as soon as Ken would be, would be awesome, and he said that he thinks that we could probably get this done in like a week. So, uh, that's just his ballpark, so.
Okay.
It, it also is. I hope to have all the culverts here when he's ready, so like I said, I'm, I'm working through, trying to make sure that they're here for when he's here.
Okay, fingers crossed, yes. Um, all right, uh, public works loaded.
All right, uh. Marty said two options, Marty, can I have your options? I printed myself up so too, and I lost. Marty, do you want?
So, what I submitted was, was in a nutshell, um, and I misspoke about the Anderson equipment, so neither of those loaders are compact. Um, so neither. Um, Aaron was inquiring about, uh, low profile tires, um, which also known as radial tires and the. Um, the Boragard equipment loaders are, that's what they're quoted with. Um, and then United said that they did not have any kind of tire options that would, that would allow it to fit. So I also talked to, um, to Bob Pollard today about seeing about if, um, we could put a, a bigger bucket on smaller loader. Um, the answer was no, um, so that was kind of unfortunate and, um. He said that, um, you know, the way they're, they're, um, designed with the, the plug system and, and some other kind of winter. Winterization, um, that a lot of people, ninety percent of people, he said, do leave them outside. Um, so Aaron was a little concerned about, um, having it outside and even if we did a carport or something, um, the cold. And mentioned rinsing salt off, I, I did talk to Bob about that as well today and, um, he said that's the last thing you wanna do with it. He said that, um, when you do that, it turns it all to a liquid and it runs into all the seams and everything of the loader. And I didn't quite understand that, but.
I didn't either.
Didn't make a whole lot of sense, but anyways, um, that's what he said. So he did send over some, some carport options if that was, you know, a, a route we decided to go, but I was hoping that we could get a bigger. Bucket on the smaller loader because it seems like that's the biggest drawback, that the bucket on that is half the size of what we have now, which would.
So I mean, it's, that would, if we went with a, a snow pusher, I mean, that would drastically help with the snow roll, I mean, so really the only thing he'd need a larger bucket for would be. The sand, which with a smaller bucket, it'd just take him longer to do it.
Yep.
Provided that those units have the power that he needed, which, that is something I could answer.
Don't either. So I believe that it comes, the one that was quoted comes with a one point six yard bucket, which could be upgraded to a one point seven yard, but. That's, that's the biggest that they could do.
And I think that. If we were to. Purchase, well, it's something that we're gonna have to, maybe, I think we should go with the, the regard because they're giving us the biggest traded.
And they have the best prices on top of that.
They do, yeah.
Yeah. Is there warranty difference?
Um, Bob did say it's a, it's a three year warranty, um, like you know that, I think, let's see, I, I have all the actual quotes.
Is it, is it the, um, the first one on the list?
That's the compact one.
Okay.
And then the other one is the one that's comparable to the one that we have now.
The one in the middle is?
But too big.
Well, yeah, the one in the middle and the one at the bottom.
Will the compact one fit in?
It will, and the thing is, is the, the one we have now, they were able to cut it down back then, so they were thinking that they can't do that anymore.
So John Tecker found one, um, I, I don't know what spurred him to like, he found a cat.
Ready?
A, a twenty twenty-two cat with three hundred thirty-three hours on it, um, it's in Phoenix, so I don't know what that means. Um, and it, he was talking to me a little bit about it, and he said, um, that he. He would advocate for the, the compact ones because they have all enough power to push a small pusher, he said, get a small pusher and, um. And the smaller bucket for what Steve's doing probably be, okay, um.
I, I wonder if the smaller one would be able to push the scene up as high in the.
That would be a concern, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but, I mean, he recommended keeping it inside. Am I asked where he, he's, is inside there sixty-five days?
Well, you love us, but ours are different.
You should ask him.
So the larger one has a thirty-six month, three thousand hour full warranty, um, and a three year, two thousand hour service plan. Um, yeah, that was one other thing that he mentioned, so any kind of maintenance oil changes, everything would be covered, um, for three years. It looks like, oh, that's a backhoe loader, but we don't want that.
John would say, maybe if you could do it, but money is a crunch, like this one was seventy-five thousand, um. But going to someone locally, honestly, it might be worth the twenty. The additional twenty that it would cost. Because they're comparable.
Right.
But getting it locally and servicing it locally would be an advantage, I would think.
Right, yeah.
And this guy is certainly putting in.
Oh, four hundred. Oh, since I started here, you know, he actually reiterated that in an email to me the other day about how he's been calling on the town for forty years. And will continue to do so, you know, before and after and, you know.
Would he be willing to bring that up, let Steve test it out?
Probably.
I think that would be.
I think, yeah.
Are you talking the compact one?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And I did, um, actually know at one point, I don't know where I had the information about, um, the reach of that, like you were talking about, um. I wanna say it was like eight or ten or, I don't know, some, some kind of, so I did ask, well, my thing, question to Steve was, will he, would he be able to load a truck with it? Cause sometimes he has to do that, um, and his answer at the time was, was yes, does that sound about right, like a?
Hell, you're gonna ramp.
A ramp?
Oh, I remember ramp. There is a over, over there. Chad see, I think is what my truck side was.
I, I have that.
But if we, if we couldn't have it here, so we, then we could play with it and try all the different things, like loading the sand shed, loading a truck.
And, and the, um, the. The thing there, the, um.
Chuck, you see if they'll throw in a set of.
The hydraulic.
Tire chains with it, till with.
Yeah, that's what John said, set of tire chains and a snow pusher.
A snow pusher, so maybe we should look into what it would cost for a snow pusher too.
Okay, and, and see if they throw in some chains.
For free. And so you work on a salesman, you say, hey, I'll buy this, and throw some chains in for me.
That might be worth their while, um, and, and it seems to me too, and the, the thing that I, I liked also about the, the compact case was that. It comes with that, um.
The coupler.
The force and that, the coupler, which those are pricey items, I mean, compared, I was looking at what, what others are charging and, you know, the larger one doesn't come.
Well, it was significant that the trade in value that they're giving us, um, is, is pretty significant.
Yeah, oh, it is, I mean, it's twice as much as the next highest, so. Yeah.
Do you have a model number on that compact key?
It's a three twenty-one S.
It's AC.
Probably is AC Bluetooth.
He wouldn't know how to run any of that, but.
No, it is Bluetooth headset.
It does, I.
Why don't you just put the earbuds on?
It's kind of a, it's a earbuds.
Yeah, the radio things that, is that what we're talking about, that he listens to, yeah, I think they have Bluetooth, but they don't have to. You know what I mean, it's a radio, essentially.
Yeah.
I don't know, I bought my husband some because he thought they're awesome, he loves them, that's all I know.
That's all I know.
So I wanna know.
So, I guess basically, we should just reach out to them and see if we can try her out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that something that places do bring?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, United actually brought it down here.
They brought in John David for him to use the sun.
Yeah, left it for a few days.
Okay, it makes total sense.
So, I mean, even if it was just, you know, maybe they don't want him to lift, to do anything with the sun.
Yeah, they could go down and play with it.
Just regular sand that does not.
Yeah, I'll see, okay, very good.
Play over the beach.
Yeah.
Let's work them, okay, so can we borrow it?
Will they throw in chains and was there something else?
Snow pusher.
Snow pusher. Maybe we can swap out the forks for the snow pusher.
But also wouldn't wanna go too big with the snow pusher.
Well, the forks, I kinda felt like were, were a good thing because, you know.
Yeah.
Yellow movie thing, yellow thing can be moved and now, now we have changing station at the beach and, um, yeah. He mentioned a couple of, of things that, that it would be handy.
The planters.
Definitely the planters.
Yep.
The benches.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great.
Yeah.
And if they're throwing them in, okay. All right, I will check on that.
All right, thank you, awesome.
And then, I don't know if this has been mentioned or not, but, um, with what they. Are giving us for a trade in would be our, this year's payment, so we wouldn't have to come up with any money that isn't budgeted for this year to, to make any kind of payments.
Wow.
And then, um.
And then if we did a lease auction, we technically wouldn't be a, a special time meeting here or any of that, because there's that kick out clause. In a municipal lease agreement that means if it doesn't pass a tab we, that it just goes back, okay, so.
And we, we've got, I got some, um, finance quotes from Boragard, which, you know, they have monthly payments and this and that, but, um, we're waiting to hear back from Anders Stoggen, who would actually.
And I did hear about.
Yearly payment, oh, you did?
I did, he just wanted to know if we had there with that as to what. Option we're looking for, so once we narrow it down into what loader we're looking at, he'll give us a proposal as well.
Yeah, I mean, that right, that one right there, dump the only one.
So.
I'm sorry.
One yard. Talking about trying out everything, that's the one that will fit in the garage.
Yes. But it only has a one and a half yard bucket.
Yeah.
Which is half the size of what we have now.
Yeah, cause you could. Bump the weight last, you better pay, you know, with two barrels on the bucket. I know why those are put well in to do it.
Well, he was talking about weight and balance issues and whatnot, which.
That's just a safety thing.
If you get a bigger bucket on there, just. Don't run around with it.
What was the price they gave you on that?
It was one twenty-two one, and they wanna give us, um, twenty-four thousand for ours, for a total of ninety-eight one. And then our, our next highest offer for trade was twelve thousand and then the other one was three thousand.
It is, in a few years, if we, you know, got a new.
Boragard will give us twenty-four. Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it costs much more than that.
Yeah, probably not, back then.
No, well, how much, sixty-nine? Thousand, yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Nineteen ninety.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-one, I think it was. Sixty-nine thousand.
Sixty-nine?
Yeah. Down there, two hundred or something, two hundred?
You don't owe you or anything.
Elena, what were you gonna say?
I forgot.
Yeah, I did, okay. All right, again, fingers crossed?
Yes.
All right, so from that to fire truck update.
Yeah, the big spenders.
Makes me nervous.
Yeah, so let me first review. Verifying options from the. So, uh, I decided to tell them all the necessary paperwork for really to get the title and everything in our name, as far as I know, they're working on the truck.
Okay.
Everything is moving, um, there, I talked to Jeff today about the door. Um, I just have to call PDQ Door to see when they can do the door. Uh, go forward with that, uh, so finance options for. The fire truck, um, I went with six or seven, because I think somebody had said seven years prior to, and I don't know what the original plan was for. Uh, the fire truck and how many years, uh, so I just.
It was, it was in this neighborhood.
It was, it was, okay.
I can't remember the exact particulars, um, the interest rate seems, it is.
I, I think the interest rate actually went down a little bit.
It seems like it did, but.
From, from, uh, the previous.
I think it was closer to six, if not.
It, it's not closer to seven, I thought, I thought, so.
There were three options, I have one there, but I think these are comparable.
Okay.
Um the payments are certainly lower.
Yes.
Um which is.
Yes, so uh the. Flight tickets are also included in this two hundred and six. That's why it's kind of an odd. Yeah.
Both fire, both.
I just wanted to make sure we accounted for all of it.
Yeah.
Okay, I get a question. I don't know, budget. On the travel.
Yeah.
That was three thousand something, what was that for?
That was because.
I'm assuming that was the plane ticket.
It wasn't the flight tickets, but it was the plane tickets twice. Right, because.
Yeah, they they ended up not having to go to New Jersey, so we canceled two of the flights because they were all one way, so from Huntsville to New Jersey and then New Jersey to Bangor. We canceled and then just went from Huntsville to Bangor. Um so we we actually paid. A little extra for some cancellation insurance, which was great because now we actually are going to be able to get.
So that will get back, put in, put back, yeah.
But it will show as a revenue, so it will always show that there was three thousand taken out, but the revenue will come back.
Right.
Yes. So it. If we were to go for the six, uh we would be saving roughly five thousand dollars. In interest. Uh. And I think that having to pay. Is, I don't wanna say as little as six thousand dollars extra a year or five thousand dollars extra a year. To save the five thousand dollars at the end, I feel like the six year option would be best way to go.
Yeah.
Now, is that prepayment line, is there no prepayment penalties? Does that mean you pay it up early?
Yes.
So say if the fire department decide they want to pitch in an extra five grand a year to help pay for.
They do.
Speaking of, do you not get it?
Yes, we do.
What is the end of period?
Eighty-seven hundred.
Wow, yes.
That's crazy. Um I I mean, I think we need to choose one of these.
Yes.
So I I would. Make a motion to choose option A.
The second. For this six year plan, yeah, yeah.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Nope.
Makes sense.
Yeah. You're good, okay, six year it is.
It's lower, still lower than what you were. Looking at before.
Yeah, right.
And the truck is red.
And the truck is red.
Okay, I just have to say, I was going through uh corn.
Yeah. Oh, I'm aware. Believe me, I heard about all the yellow trucks in the area. I gotta say, orange and just go to brand new black one. Somebody. And then uh. And then actually, they got a. It's a pumper tanker, but it's a. It's the crew cab, I think it's got like a three thousand gallon tank, and they're thinking behind it was. Why have two trucks when you can have one?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, uh the Lisbon falls as mon, excuse me, their trucks are all orange.
Well, of course.
Like it, color of fire truck is is a preference. It turns out, but.
Awesome, very good.
We could choose.
You're just a troublemaker.
It's true, obviously.
And then he's dropping six hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Wow.
Not the nine hundred.
Commercial, did you say?
No.
Yeah, I I wish.
Me too, me too.
But because it would be a completely different experience and.
It goes forward if. When we have to go through this process again, it will be.
I don't know if I shared with you, I had the opportunity to meet uh Jared Golden a couple of weeks ago, I mean, he was in Greenville. And it was kind of a informal discussion kind of thing and I I mentioned, I said. That in the OSHA rules um uh would adversely affect. A lot of small town fire departments in our district and he was very aware of it. His assistant said that they've been put on hold right now. Um and but he, you know, I I said, you know. It would just be impossible for small towns like us to keep replacing. The equipment in the in the trucks um.
In the training.
In the training, yeah, I mentioned that too. So he was very aware of that. I just had to put my two cents in. All right, anything else on that? Or hopefully every all the things line up date wise, the.
Yeah.
Door and.
So uh also, back to this, uh so. We may end up having to have another meeting because they're looking at it October first, closing day. So depending on what the requirements are, we might have to have another date, but uh once I get this information back to. Because you guys will need a legal opinion in in order to enter into this, so. Uh John's actually working directly with First Student Insurance to do this.
And then um as far as. Do we have an estimated due date? I mean, it sounded like it's gonna be December.
Yeah.
At the earliest.
Yeah, pretty close.
All right, on two dangerous buildings.
Okay, so I'll start with Teddy Hill first because unfortunately, um. As much as I would love to blame this on my predecessor. It's partially my fault because even though it wasn't my job, it was me doing it. So the process for um owning this property, so the foreclosure process. Was not done. So in order to do that process, you have to send out the impending automatic foreclosure. All of this stuff, and I have every letter that I've ever sent to every person except for them, so I'm assuming I. For some reason, it just never got sent to them. Uh so we technically don't own the Teddy Hill property.
Okay.
Um my recommendation would be to go through that process in the next. Round, like the next set of, which would be November, December. So when I send out the next notices for all the other tax acquired and impending foreclosures, send it with it so that. It it stays in the folder, it stays with the the group of.
Would this mean there's an opportunity for someone that wanted to step in and purchase the property? Um without all of the the headaches of that legal process.
They wouldn't be purchasing it from us.
They would be purchasing it from the owner, I guess.
Okay.
But there is still some headaches to be.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
But it's not. No, no, it would be whoever bought it would have to deal with the lawyers that have a wing on it.
Right.
So.
And also. I know you talked about um where she got that grant.
Right, and I can't find any.
Right.
Any records.
So if it was only, if it was only a couple thousand dollars owed to us.
And it was.
If somebody said, hey, we wanna buy it. Say, there you go, free player. Can we do that?
I don't know. I I would say that we should, if we can. If that comes to that, because I mean, we're talking about just a couple of months. So this grant, the stipulations, it was um you can't sell the property for five years. Well, she sold it within six months of that five years, but if the grant paperwork was dated six months prior to that. But I can't find the grant.
Can't find that, so I wonder if she even has a copy of that.
It is was a long time ago, a long time ago, so it.
Well, there's no paperwork, and it never happened.
And it wouldn't have been filed in any.
Well, that's the thing is, the thing that you don't hear, but the the judgment was filed with the pa- the courts.
Right.
But the actual initial grant paperwork wasn't, so I don't know. It is like arguing over that six months, like now, we're not gonna see anybody.
Right.
So. So if it comes to that, uh. I I would say that we could, you know, draft a letter or something saying. The town's interested in this property, blah, 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 and then memorize it. If that becomes an option, if it sells. Uh and then we would have to clear those, uh if it was to sell before we foreclose on it, which it would be like December-ish. Um then we would just have to. Discharge the the leads that are on it when it's paid. And then that's the center street. Uh. I I don't wanna say no update because I have tried so hard, um but the attorney uh is actually trying to touch base with a. A different attorney because I sent him all the paperwork that we have, uh like the the hearing that we did, the. The decision that we made, all of that stuff uh that we filed with the registry, I sent all that to him. And he thought that there, because we want to tear down the building, there might be additional steps that wasn't. Taken, that we might end up having to do, but he wanted to check with another attorney to make sure that he was correct about that.
Did he have like? Like, I feel like this one's been dragging on now.
For a long time.
Like it was last chance, six months ago.
Well, and that's just it, cause I I told him, because that was one of my questions, has it been too long now? Since the process started, so that was one of my questions, and he said, you know, like, it hasn't even been a full year yet, so he thinks that we're still good. Uh but.
If we were gonna do something, we probably should do it before.
Whatever.
For reasons.
Right. So.
So.
And I don't know what this other steps are that he thinks that we needed to do. We did it the same way that we have done other.
Right.
The properties, so.
And we dealt with, well, Zach, who was a different lawyer with the firm, but um you know, he guided us through the others, so I don't know.
So I don't know either. And it maybe this other attorney is like, no, they covered their bases, just go ahead, do it. Maybe that's the case, so.
Well, hopefully we hear back within a week or two.
I I, well, I'm hoping so. The last time I spoke with him was on Friday of last week, so it's almost been a week.
Get it over with so Marty doesn't have to talk to Mr. Dunphy anymore.
I'll probably talk to him more. Yeah, he went back to Florida.
Yeah.
That was why we hadn't heard from him for quite a while.
Yeah, I would I would just bug the attorney, just.
If you don't hear that. Yeah, definitely. Cause I had to bug it, but get it to get this, just this little bit of information from him.
Yeah.
So. Because uh in in his defense, I have sent him so many random little tidbits and questions that. I didn't want that to fall off the radar, so I then sent him another email that said, oh, and by the way, don't forget about this one, too, and so. He has kind of been trying to juggle different topics, but.
That's something you're paying big bucks for.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, very good. All right, anything else on?
Um no, dangerous buildings, okay.
Um I feel like we already covered code enforcement issues.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah.
Okay. Onto ATVs.
Uh. I. I don't really have much here. I do have two maps, but they don't specifically have blocks in covered, they don't show like. It it almost comes right to blocks and it then stops. And so.
The ones that's on the website.
Right, and the the older ones that we have, they're, and I'm wondering if they just haven't updated it since they just got the permission from DOT.
Elliott'sville.
Elliott'sville, yeah.
Okay, so they did get permission.
I don't know that for sure, but I'm pretty sure that they did because I heard other people talking about it. Who was it that came here?
Should town have a copy of that permission?
Uh we don't have it for the other ones either. Yeah, they don't.
That's interesting.
Anyone else have to get.
DOT permission?
Well, I don't remember them having.
They, well, they're not supposed to come in from Lancher, are they?
No.
No.
Lynch is not.
Although, so no, they haven't.
They're not supposed to come in Cleveland Street.
But they do.
But they do.
I mean. They're not supposed to use the North Hill for group.
Oh, but they do.
They do.
So it's, I mean, it is a thing, I like it's kind of part of the, it, I think it's part of the. When you have the discussions around ATV use, once you open up, we don't have. I I keep saying the deputized Marty. But um but we don't have anyone to enforce it, so it's not enforced.
We have said this from the start, right?
Like.
It it is, it's hard because like, like Steve has a point, it does bring a lot of businesses into town and. That's a good thing, and whatever good thing, there's the alternative as well, and we're we're seeing that.
Right, and you know, the the last week, um you know, on Facebook, the the clubs that have reported that. You know, uh landowners are.
Oh, yeah.
Um closing the trails because of, you know, misuse of by a few, um I mean, Milo and else.
Well, they seem very supportive of the landlord in most cases.
Yeah, yeah, but it's it's hard, you know, to, I think for the clubs to. Do self enforcement.
Right.
Um and it it's the enforcement has just always been the issue, but I I just. Um my question was, do they have from Elliott'sville, it's it's clear to go on DOT, on on like DOT. Onto the main road.
Right.
When then, does DOT put the signage out there? I haven't noticed it.
DOT is the one that does.
Do that.
Puts all the signs.
Okay, so I I haven't noticed it, right, right. Um.
But you would think that we would, they would contact us to see if we would even want them to have.
I think that's what we do.
That's, yeah, we get that.
We did, that's true, I forgot about that letter.
Um, okay, and then, then we do have their their contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, and. I I guess I. I would just say, I mean, we we were, when we have these contracts, sign these contracts, is that we we talked about reviewing. How things are going each year, um and the only thing that I would say um to to note publicly is. You know, we have ATVs going on town roads that aren't permitted and. You know, I've I've heard complaints on Pleasant Street because we have kids on that road and um. Yeah.
It's, I I, you know, I had someone that asked me if we could hang up. Signs.
No ATVs.
No, ATV's not permitted or whatever it would be, and um, you know, I suppose we could look at the cost of of that.
Yeah, and maybe it's something that DOT would like be able to help us with.
Right, my understanding is that they're changing some of the rules around insurance, cause that's the other big concern, having ATVs on the road, so don't carry insurance. And my understanding is that, I think. John Tack told me that they're looking at those rules right now as far as, um at least with side by sides requiring. Undecarity liability.
Insurance, yeah.
Insurance, I think that was.
Honestly, that was on the news a while back, some of the towns and stuff were talking about it.
Yeah, so I I. I mean, I think there are several approaches to that, but. I don't think we want to free, well, we certainly don't want to run into some of the problems with the other person. Or landowners, I mean, I got the impression that somebody fired a gun.
Yeah.
Should be a one.
Yeah.
Like just.
Not add the landowner, but yeah, that was in Milo.
And and so, um like.
It's a wall wall planted over there.
And and. The club was very supportive of the landowner shutting down the trail, but talked about how difficult it was gonna be to reroute the trail.
Yeah.
When you take out this section, can't go around. So anyway, I I do think we could look at some of that. I think it's a conversation that should, that that we should probably, there was a meeting before I started on select board with the the ATV club. It might be um. It might be getting maybe this 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 winter or next spring, when again, things slow down, um. Having another meeting where we have some of those discussions, because it's not one or two towns people that I've heard it from. It's. It's almost the people that that don't have ATVs and don't ride ATVs are the ones saying, why are there ATVs everywhere? I I don't know that it's a battle that we really can enforce, but it's worth having a conversation with the clubs.
And and I think, you know, the clubs, um, you know, they try their best in in terms of. You know, having their their members adhere to the rules, the road, unfortunately, it's those. Few rebels that, you know, make it spoil it for everyone, and also seems like it's towards the end of the season that all this happens, it's almost like. Those few people are like, oh, the trails are gonna be closed soon anyway, we can, you know.
Whatever.
I know, but anyway, I think having a conversation with our two clubs in terms of the signage on on roads that. You know, if they, like, the Abbott Club has been very good about providing us signs. Um, as landowners, uh, like, you know, for our our parking lot, um, they gave us that no ATV uh sign. Because they want people to, so they don't wanna lose their their access.
Right.
And so we could ask them about, you know, would they be willing to provide us some signs for those roads that we're having problems with.
Or even help to to for whoever else to be involved in creating a new map.
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
Uh, since we're giving them access.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't.
So inviting ATV clubs to a meeting at some point would be.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, so.
I mean, to also hear if there are things that aren't working.
True, right, true. Alright. Wow, finally, new business. MMA disbandment.
MMA disbandment.
Thank you, Brian.
Um, so this is the grant for the security cameras. And I actually need one of your signatures on the grant application.
Supposed to be the chair, isn't it?
It has way more authority.
I don't know. So it's just one page application. If you guys read it, look it up, and then these are just the quotes from the security cameras from before.
Oh, okay.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, it's probably in there.
Three thousand. This here, this.
No, well, they were.
Four thousand and five dollars and six cents.
So.
Oh, that's, this is just gonna type one.
Oh, okay.
That's something to think about, too, now that we got wifi at the gym. In the future, possibly putting security cameras up there.
That's a good idea, you know, had I thought about this sooner, I would have actually had the utilities district apply for the. Cameras here, and then the town could have applied for the cameras at the gym, had I thought about that sooner, but I just thought about that right now, so.
So security is still going to, but do you, do you wanna?
What?
Submit with those, or you wanna correct it?
Do you wanna come back and sign it in the morning?
Come back and.
Okay, yeah, do that, because I'd rather.
Do you want, I'll just, you want me to circle the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, our our, which fields are up there, then this can.
The old one.
Enough?
Oh, I got the old one.
The old one, yeah.
Only need to patrol that one too.
The gym one's down there, but. We don't know where to point the camera.
We need to point the camera at, um, the charging station, that's a utility.
Yeah.
Really stretching.
Yeah, well, that's, that's actually, that's still.
Security. Uh, security.
The case where if you spell, it probably doesn't have.
It doesn't, didn't pick it up, I know.
But I always used to run into kids that would. Add it to their dictionary.
Oh, and then it wouldn't pick it up, yeah.
Cuz it would ask you when it found the error, do you wanna add this, and so then it never would find their error. I have to go and disable their.
Now, would AI do that?
Yeah, I would just write.
That's actually a word.
What?
Security, su- security.
Cuz I've noticed, like, I'll be, you know, typing something, and the auto correct will kick on, it will put something that's not what I was trying to.
Yeah.
Spell.
That's true.
So I just typed it, security, and changed it to security, but it could just be mine.
Alright, well, your computer's smart.
So she, we lost her.
Yeah, she, yeah, she. Is there allergies?
All are, all none, she has small children.
Yeah.
Alright, so we all set on on that.
How did it not even like?
I know, we were just saying, how did it not pick it up, right?
Well, and that's why I probably didn't.
I don't know, it's okay, I will come by tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
I'm sorry, um, alright, on to, uh, general assistance maxims.
Okay, so this was supposed to be just maximums, um, but with every. Rock I pick up in this place, there's some stuff under it. So I had a wonderful GA audit today, um, and we were in compliance, but with concerns. So they're gonna revisit us in six months, and hopefully, everything is.
Sorry, what is GA?
General assistance. Um, in terms of like, uh, the process or? The process, the applications, the ordinance, the, uh, there's a, there's a lot to it, and, um. Let me switch back here. So I could not find the ordinance, um, itself that was adopted. It was at one point, I know, um, but we're gonna re-adopt the twenty twenty four version of. MMA's version, because that's what everybody uses and recommends and everything, um, so I couldn't find the signed version. But the maximums that were, um, adopted in twenty twenty two, which they're supposed to be done every year, but. They'll drop that ball last year. So we need a public hearing, but then the select board can vote to adopt the ordinance. So I figured just tacking on to the solar ordinance, public hearing with the local liquor election ordinance, um. Public hearing, and then once after that public hearings over, you guys can vote to adopt the twenty twenty four version of. The general assistance ordinance, and where you guys are just adopting it, it has all the appendices with it. So you guys wouldn't have to adopt or accept the maximums this year, because it's already included in the ordinance that we're adopting. So that was in a nutshell. Uh, there's a couple of things that I need to do when it comes to applications, we've only had three applications in a year, so. Those are three out of like the six I've ever done in my life, so it's a learning curve, and, um. But he sat with me and, um, he is gonna send me. Uh, some training, conveniently, all the basic G A training is spent on the worst days possible. This one, this next one is on the twentieth, and I'm gone the week after, so I don't wanna stick the, be out of the office on the twentieth and then. Gone the whole next week, so I missed that one, too, but he said that, um, they are trying to come up with. Uh, some different training that's online, and it will be like four hours long versus like a whole day, so that more people can have. Can do this kind of training at a very basic level, because I haven't. All the training that I have is on the GA hotline, asking them questions as to how to go through.
Is this the training through municipal, municipal, or?
Uh, no, this would actually be through D H S.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh. And, uh, the general assistance directors, welfare directors association. But I do have a copy of the ordinance, if you care to review it, it is a hundred and thirty pages, just so you know. Uh, yes, the MMA's version is, and which is what we're, and I can, I can just forward you the. Just the ordinance and you guys can.
It's easier to not read it at home than not read it.
Right.
No, I I will read every word.
Oh, I'm sure, well, I'll send you just the maximums, so you guys can at least get the general idea as to like what the that's going to be for the year.
Okay.
Um, and we. The ordinance itself is very. Dope.
Yeah.
And it's more formality than.
Right.
Anything. So, yes, that's that.
Okay. And on to schedule a public hearing for the solar ordinance.
Right, so, uh. This is actually going to be scheduled public hearing and schedule the town meeting as well, because, um. Might as well, while we're here. So this actually will be a public hearing for the solar ordinance, local liquor election, and general assistance ordinance at five thirty at the gym. And I have some. Public hearing notices for you guys to sign, because, you know, the local liquor election is very particular. So I figured you guys could just sign both, I made two separate postings, because I wasn't sure if we could technically include the. Election in the same or not, so I'm just posting it separately.
Same.
Same, I think, everything, just separate posts, because it has all the. Pursuant to blah, 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 that needs to be included, and then this needs the, um. Questions that we voted on last time, the, shall this municipality go on blah, 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 or off premises consumption? And then this one is notice of public hearing, and it just says solar ordinance and general assistance.
Okay.
So. Um, and it's November fourteenth, uh, so the actual election will be on November fourteenth. The public hearing will be on October third.
When we have November fourth.
That, wasn't that an option?
That's when the moratorium.
That's when the moratorium expires.
But we had something scheduled, cuz when I was talking about figuring out my. The trip.
Uh, well, technically, the November fourteenth, you could miss if you wanted to, because it's.
Missed, I just, I'm playing around.
Yeah, but November fourteenth is when the actual election is gonna happen.
But the hearing is.
But the hearing is October third.
Okay.
So where's my important dates? This, this will. So then it would be, uh, the public hearing on the third. And then a special town meeting to vote on the solar ordinance would be on the seventeenth, and then just have this live board meeting after the town meeting. And now that we have internet at the gym, we can have Zoom as well.
See how we can.
Sure thing.
Alright, so public hearing on the solar is after the third.
Yep.
And what was after that?
Sept- ten, uh, October seventeenth would be the special town meeting to vote on the solar ordinance.
Because the liquor election is a vote, like paper ballot, they come in.
Yes.
Vote.
And our meeting for solar and GA is October seventeenth.
Just so, because GA can be adopted throughout this live board.
Okay, and then the fourteenth, remember, you said it was special town.
Seventeenth.
Oh.
No, of of November fourteen.
Oh, November fourteenth is the, um, liquor license referendum, yes.
Voting.
Refer.
Right. Seventeenth, the third, seventeenth of October and fourteenth of November.
Yes.
Okay, and then. That's also our our select board meeting after that.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
So then you guys can adopt the GA or ordinance.
You can, uh. A local ballot to the general election thing, you know.
Yes, but there's more heights, hopes to jump through if you do that.
Okay.
So then I opted not to do that.
Fine, I just was trying to think of like.
Yeah, I know, I thought of that, too, and I was like, oh, that'd be great, and then they're like, oh, but if you do that, here's some new rules you have to follow.
Plus.
Plus all the other ones, so.
Plus, I know, um, are we the voting site for one insured house? Yeah, so.
It would get confusing.
Well, this is not Lancher.
No, but if.
We did it on general.
Oh.
Cuz you only hand this ballot to Monson Residence, but.
Oh, and that's lovely, isn't it, same?
That's so much fun.
So let's.
I never made that.
You can come here to vote.
Uh, yes, so it will be from eight to six voting here, and then we'll have the special town meeting to count the votes and. Elect a moderator, do the whole moderator process, and then save the election results, and then adjourn basically.
So we still have to.
We still have to have the meeting.
Gotcha, okay.
So it would be eight to six voting, six P M, town meeting at gym, on the fourteenth, on the fourteenth.
So we'll have the warrant for that there, we'll have to have that. Um, sets.
Oh, right, we're gonna have to have a special town be, uh, special select board meeting to vote on the word for the seventeenth.
Right.
So what do we got for for timing, cuz maybe, um, didn't you say we have to have a another meeting?
Oh, about the fire truck.
Okay, so maybe we can do it then, and when that's gonna happen.
Next week sometime, I would assume.
So we'll just. Let them know to selves.
It will, it'll have to be, unless we vote, unless we have one the week that I'm gone, and I'll just have to, it'll have to be it.
You got on the, the week of twenty third?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did it.
But if it was like. If I do it ahead of time, I guess I could try to zoom. If I have. I know, I. I know, I'm just thinking I have to drive back to the main road, make sure I have everything, but we'll just, yeah.
The only other question I have about about this is. We're going to have to have another hearing if, and I I hope the ordinance. Oh, I guess I won't say that, if the ordinance does not pass for some reason, we have to have another meeting about the moratorium.
Right.
Because we said we would do that.
Right.
Is there a way to hold that? Tentatively schedule it for the same day as the the voting for the solar ordinance? If it fails, if then kind of thing, if it, if it does not pass, can we then immediately hold? A hearing on the moratorium?
I do not know the answer to that.
Or is that too, is that too complicated? Um. We should just.
I like that idea, if it's legal to do it, then, uh, the reason I think that is because at that point. We will not be covered by a moratorium as of the fourth, technically.
Um, right?
Right.
And so.
If we say if it was two or three weeks after the fact, and we did another one, would that be retroactive? Or, go ahead.
But I was just thinking that.
Get done.
Get it done, if it, if.
Even if it's. Yeah.
And if the ordinance passes, then we don't obviously need.
Right.
But I think it sends a more cohesive message.
I also don't want to confuse people.
I don't either.
Into. Into. Because people are very confused as it is. Like, the people that I've gotten in the front office are very confused about this law and there's, there's so much different in- information floating around that I, I don't. I don't wanna confuse them anymore than what they already are. Um, I like that idea, I think that would. Be helpful, but at the same time, I feel like it might misconstrue.
It also sends a message that if. If it gets voted down, then we'll just put a moratorium in place. Instead of actually looking at the ordinance and seeing the restrictions in the ordinance. So it was just an idea.
Yeah.
I, I think it probably makes sense to keep them separate, plus we don't want Aaron to have a whole week done.
The whole eye could have that.
Well, and I was gonna say too, it's, it's the, the public hearing is really for the planning board and I would hate. A select board to make that decision for them.
And I don't wanna take any authority or any, any um. I know that I was already asked the question, is the planning board really gonna let the moratorium lapse? And I said, well, planning board doesn't, doesn't have anything to do, uh, really, they can, they can as citizens, they can make a recommendation. One way or another for the, for the moratorium event still needed to be done, but um.
It will. Um, for one, they, they're confused as to like, why people voted it down. And then they're confused as to what they were even voting on because one person said, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I knew that.
And then they said that Tyler's letter was a little bit confusing and I was like, really that was. Straightforward, but also didn't do what he thought it was going to.
That letter was confusing.
Yeah, and so, so and then, um, what was the quote today? Oh, he thought that we were voting to just block solar period, so.
Well, there are people who think that.
Yeah, so th- there's just a lot of like.
Oh, my big.
And then. Well, you know, um, the, so in the proposed, the new proposed solar ordinance, it has the exemption still in it?
No, exemption's gone and we increased the buffer within the rural residential to.
Okay, that's what I was a hundred percent certain that Jamie told me.
Yes.
And then somebody came in, he told me otherwise and I was like, I maybe second guessed myself.
Somebody, somebody other than James came in and talked.
Yes, somebody else.
There, there, yeah, because we, we got information from somebody that did not include. That, that the exemption was not included.
Exemption's gone.
Yeah, yeah, so, so there's misinformation.
I know it's a, there have been some mailers lately. But should we look at doing the mailer for this, for the hearing?
Well, that's what I was wondering, cause this is my upcoming important dates thing and I was thinking of putting this in their little newsletter.
Right, and that will be going to everybody in town.
Okay, so that's what I.
Is that going on?
Uh, should be going, the fifteenth is the target date.
So.
I think it'd be great to know the highlights of the new ordinance before I show up to vote on it. I don't know if it's.
Yeah, so, well.
But that flyer would be fantastic.
Right, and then so on the, the public hearing day on October third, that's where we're gonna go over what the, the highlights are.
So maybe, I don't know, we can't fit everything into one page, but we could put a link to the website, we can get it on the website.
Right.
That.
That's good for me.
Okay, that would be good. That, yeah, at least.
Did you get the original?
I got one from back in style.
From the previous hearing?
Yes, before the.
So I mean technically this is exactly the same, other than that buffers up.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, I, I think what people don't understand is it's a fairly restrictive ordinance. Um, all things considered and um. I, I think we would run into some legal issues if we, I'm surprised that there are so many things that are outright banned. Because my understanding is courts don't love outright bans, they're more likely to overturn an outright ban than to support. Restrictions in an ordinance.
Right.
Um, and so, I, 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 I think the more people that can get a clear understanding and I think it was so confused last time. And there was nobody's. It was not the planning board's fault.
It was Tyler, it was Tyler.
It was not, it was.
You can say that, cause you're over there.
Well, I mean, it didn't include the, the other folks who had things in the works. And they were upset and we didn't know about that and it was, you know, I don't know how, anyway, that's all back. Um, but I like the ideas and I'm sorry I'm cutting you.
No, no, please.
The idea of going over in the hearing, at the beginning of the hearing, the highlights. Because I wondered how many people really kinda looked at the whole.
Well, I know Tim, Tim came up with a one-page thing that we hand, that was handed out before the vote, I believe. I think it was not at the hearing.
It wasn't at the hearing, but.
But I think having something like that that really highlights each zone and what's allowed in each zone and then. Um, highlights, and I know we're trying, we don't wanna make it about a single project, but highlights that. The exception was.
No, we could.
Was removed, uh, like.
We could do a multi-page mailing next week, we could have one page about it just to the seller ordinance. With just what you're suggesting.
I, I mean, it might be worthwhile. I think the more real information, because there is so much. I, I don't wanna call it misinformation, cause I don't think there's a, a bad intent, but it's misunderstanding. And, and so I think the more transparent and the more open we can make, that's even the wrong word, because it's.
I can't see any reason why we couldn't add a whole page just explaining.
As long as it's still easy to mail and, and, yeah.
Who wants to come helpful twice as many pieces?
I mean.
Bring them together.
Take them together and.
You can't staple them and send it out.
You can't do staples on anything going in the mail.
I know.
No, not, these don't go in envelopes, they're just pieces of paper, this is table sketch and sorting, this is all going in counts, but wow, really shouldn't apply, but I think. The rec does and Molly already bends the rules for us a little bit, so.
Right, um, that might be worthwhile. I, I just think that there's, there's a lot of confusion around it and.
I'll email the planning board.
And there are people saying a lot of things, some of which is accurate and some of which is not accurate and so.
Well, and I think that like, Stephen made a couple of posts on Facebook and none of his posts on Facebook. Say that the exemption has been taken out, so I think he's under that.
Right.
And he's at that.
That, that his post says that.
It says the only change that was made was the two hundred foot buffer.
And getting rid of the.
Right, so he didn't say that.
Includes that in his post, so.
Well, he, Steve is of the opinion that we should not permit solar and over the middle at all. Period, and frankly, a one acre is so little.
Well, I think, I, I mean commercially, it's not viable at all. Um, so, uh, I, I think it largely is a restriction that, in fact.
Doesn't really mean much.
Sandra, there was one question that, and, um, and James, we talked about when we was here last time. Um, that whole capacity thing.
Right.
And nobody seems to know that answer and I thought that was a big piece.
James did get some information about that and I.
Okay.
Not, not in my head, because it is.
Cause that should be something we.
Yeah, that was talked about at the meeting we had last week, or two, whatever it was.
Okay.
It's probably the same information that he gave to us, that once the capacity is gone, it's gone.
But, yeah, but we didn't know what that was or if, if rooftop solar.
I don't think he has any update on.
Rooftop solar shouldn't impact it because that's just for that dwelling.
Unless it's grid tied.
If it's grid tied, but it's gonna be trickles of power, it's not gonna be massive.
You would think, yeah, you're, you're making assumptions, so I just thought having.
I, I, I think he has the same answer to the gate.
I, I think he does.
I don't think it's any clearer as far as what the capacity actually is, we only have that number based on what, honestly, what Tyler has told us.
Well, I. Yeah, Glenn.
I, I.
Glenn.
I believe it's, I believe it's fluctuated between three and five and. Um, it's hard to get anyone to really lock in on the, what it actually is and what's been used already. Um, does that count against it or is that the number? So I think there's some confusion. It may have been five initially, two of it's already diffused maybe, I don't know.
C M P should be able to tell us the capacity of substitutions.
And then. Have we called C M P before?
Well, we.
My thing, I try to report.
My husband and I have an appointment in another two weeks with revision energy coming to look because we're talking about. Solar panels on our house that's tied to the grid, that, you know, what we don't use, so I might ask this, this fellow. I have a question on October third, what's the time of that public hearing?
Five thirty at the gym.
Alright, that's what I have.
And the planning board is at six?
Yes.
I think.
Okay.
Whatever you said.
Alright, so we're looking at, um, maybe meeting next Thursday to some.
Yeah, yes, I'll, I'll follow up with John to make sure that everything will be. In order for that to go on fire. Okay, so. Uh, but you guys will have to sign these public key.
Do we need to make a motion? Uh, make a motion to, um, to sign the notice of public hearing. For the general assistance ordinance and, um, for the order license. And then we don't have a paper to sign, but also for the solar.
The solar went to all the general assistance.
Oh, and the solar ordinance, yeah, right.
Yeah, I figured those two could be together.
I got what you were saying.
I know, I'm picking up what you're putting down. Any discussion?
After eight, my brain starts to get a little mushy.
Starts them out, yeah.
Two, can I put two? We meet the Monson Gym, oh, we're gonna meet the Monson, Monson, meet at the Monson Gym.
Yeah.
See, this is why I goes with the two teachers before.
Well, that one, I just, sure, just put add. Uh, that's why that one she just typed up like while we were starting the meeting, because we only had the liquor one, which. These are a little bit different than how we usually do public hearings, but this is what the template was on the local liquor election.
That's why.
So I was like, yeah.
I know you have to post that with my little addition in there.
All those brain things where your brain reads.
Yeah.
Even though it's not there.
That's good. Well, did, and you, you included this in your motion too, right?
Yeah.
I, I did, I lumped it all.
Yeah, thank you. You were excited too?
Don't you have to read those clauses in the motions?
I don't know, do it again.
Um, yeah, I'm pretty sure that was one of the things they said.
That's right, you're right.
Yeah.
So just these two clauses?
Big word for, don't put anything else in there.
No, but just these two, okay, so I make a motion that we, um, that we post this note, uh, notice.
Notice of public hearing.
Of public hearing.
Read from.
For Thursday, the third day of October at five thirty, evening at the Monson Gym.
On the following.
Um, the form, local option, the core referendum questions pursuant to twenty A M R S. First show, number one, shall this municipality authorize the state to commit sales experience for off premises consumption? On days other than Sunday and second, or number two. Shall this municipality authorize the state to commit sales experience for off premises consumption on Sundays?
Second.
Does that have the numbers, the statute on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
He, he, yeah, he went through. Alright, and for the, I second, you motioned.
Did you do that motion now?
I got that.
It was in the same order as last time. Oh, I favor, you should just run it off.
I'll write it.
Did we have to redo that, the first one too?
No.
No, the first one doesn't have any restrictions on what can be said and not said.
Yeah. Thank you for catching me.
Yeah, thank you, cause we don't wanna be.
There are so many, don't wanna be non.
We have to snatch all the liquor back.
Liquor snatchers.
Liquor snatcher. You have a new title?
Yeah.
Alright, um. Personal policy updates, or update, I guess.
I actually don't have a copy of the personal policy, I forgot.
That's okay, I think what we talked about last time was.
To have a workshop.
Have a workshop.
When everything cooled down.
To review it, so I just threw that.
Yeah.
At you, just so we wouldn't forget to do that.
So do we add it to, to old business now when we postpone discussing it?
I know, it is definitely something that we need to do, it's just, we expected things to be. We expected the solar ordinance to be over by now, we expected the fire truck to be over by now, we expected a lot of things.
Anything till like January.
About that.
No, I think that's fair.
I know, like.
Like, I feel like we're still in, but putting up fires now.
Cause then after that, then it's gonna be Christmas. And the whole holiday fest.
I can't believe it's September twelfth, I seriously believed in August was over.
Or when I walked up on the collaborative meeting yesterday, I was like, wait, you guys don't meet in the summer? Dang, that's gotta be the official recognition.
The summer is over, yeah.
So we have a lot of meetings coming up and I'm just wondering, not to lose sight of updating it, but. How about if we just revisit this, um.
January.
January, seriously, really, I, I think that's realistic.
That is realistic.
That makes sense, new year, new.
New policies.
New policies.
Okay.
Postpartum until January.
Alright, holy cow. Um, anything else that we?
I think we covered it, alright.
Uh, motion to. Alright, any discussion, all in favor? Thank you for hanging in there with us.
It's all interesting.